Good morning. Today's workshop is going to be on our climate equity action plan. I think this is the shaping of the first ever plan that we had for the county. So I think one of the initial goals is to look at what we're already doing and see how we align that into our future actions. And I will let Kathy Hadine take over there, but before that, let's go around the table so we know who's here. Rafael Teiga, District 5.
Victoria Reinhardt, District 7.
My Chong Chong, District 6.
Krista Martinson, District 3.
Carrie Collins, Deputy County Manager, EDCI.
Abby Phillips, she heard pronouns, I'm the public planner.
Kathy Hadine, Deputy County Manager, Health and Wellness Service Team.
Joanna Berg, County Manager.
Rena Moran, Ramsey County Commissioner, District 4.
Mayor Joe McGuire, Commissioner, District 2.
Nicole Frethen, Commissioner, District 1.
I'm Daniel Schmidt, I'm the interim Division Manager for environmental health hall.
Chris Villanueva, I'm a planning manager for health and wellness or the team groups.
Cameron Bailey, planning specialist of Met Council.
Emma is new to Ramsey County, like a couple of weeks now, we stole him from Met Council.
Yeah, my Brian will be so happy.
Well, well, well done.
Claire, by the way, he started as an urban scholar.
Oh, wow, wow.
Welcome. And I'm Karen Cretzwa, I'm the Deputy County Manager for Information and Public Records.
Anne Whitey, go.
Yeah.
Island, Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, everyone, Sarah Holly, I'm the Director of St. Lawrence.
I'm Chevron, Abby Vincent.
Hi, I'm Alex, I'm the Deputy County Manager of all the plan.
Okay, good.
Ray Eden Frank, Division, oh, excuse me, Deputy Director.
Thank you all. Kathy, take it away.
Perfect, thank you, Chair Tega, we are super excited to be here. This has been a couple of years in the making, just specifically for this plan that you see in front of you, but many years of work across Ramsey County and very exciting. Like, I don't think we're going to be able to contain our excitement about how, how important this work is and how collaborative it's been and how there's a lot of work to be done moving forward. And we know that you are all very enthusiastic about our climate equity action work here at Ramsey County too. So we're excited to be able to present this information and this climate equity action plan to you today. So we'll go to the next slide. I think we have to do it, do you want me to do?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just the next slide just really is highlighting who we have here today. Deputy County Manager, Carrie Collins and I are co-sponsors of the strategic priority. We, I also want to do a big shout out to Chief of Staff Elizabeth Tolzman and Director of Policy and Planning Lydia Germa, as we've gone through the last couple of years with a lot of different changes. We've had a few different co-sponsors of this work, but everybody bringing really important expertise to this place, so I just wanted to lift them up as well. And then we do have the strategic priority team members who are here, if you want to wave. It's mostly everybody who's hanging out with everything, who have also been a part of this work as we move forward. So I will hand it over to Carrie.
All right, thanks Kathy. We're going to talk a little bit about kind of building off the workshop that you received last August. And so that did a deeper dive in terms of the years of work that led us to this point. So we're carrying the ball forward and talking through the plan and kind of next steps associated with implementing the plan. So you'll receive an update today on the strategic priority and the climate equity action plan. And then you'll review the projects that are currently in motion. You know, this is the first time that the county has really started to articulate, you know, what is it that we're currently doing and where do we need to be, where do we need to go? So that we can be really intentional in terms of how we're serving in this kind of space. So we'll look ahead to next steps and how we can kind of start to gather resources and kind of drive against the recommendations of the plan.
I will say in lifting up co-sponsors, I really should have looked up Abby. Our planner who's been leading this work along the way, just the amazing work of making sure that we as a county system are doing this together, that you're working so well with community to ensure that community voices are at the table and providing their input into this space. And it's just been, it's been amazing and an honor to be supporting you in this space too. So there you go, I was like, I did not talk about Abby.
In terms of objectives for today's presentation, we will be providing an update in terms of the new climate equity action plan. We're hoping to receive feedback from you all in terms of the direction, where we may need to go, where we may need additional work. And ultimately requesting your support and direction and advocacy to now implement against, drive against the plan. Before I turn it over to Abby, our climate and health planner extraordinaire, I do also want to extend my gratitude for the way in which she approached this work. As you can imagine, the organization, you know, especially in a post pandemic era, has done a lot. And when you take on a report initiative like this, sometimes it can cause various departments and service teams to kind of bristle and go, what does this mean for my staff? And funding and her approach to bringing everyone to the table helped to really celebrate the work and to say, you're going to want to be a part of this. You're going to want to make sure your work is reflected in this plan. So thank you for leading with that demeanor. And because I know on the EDCI aspect of things, where we're looking at the built environment and changing landscape, that can be hard to do, it can be hard to channel resources in this way. But Abby and her leadership really made it disarming and brought people to the table in a way that was going to move the ball faster, so thank you for that.
Thank you, that was the nicest introduction we've ever had.
All right.
You only get one a year.
Hey, that'll last a while. All right, so as you know, this work falls under our strategic priority to respond to climate change and increase community resilience. We continue to see changes to our local climate, including milder winters like the one we've just had, hotter summers, more extreme weather, exactly. More extreme weather events and longer allergy seasons. And these changes have a multitude of impacts on resident health, safety and wellbeing, particularly on under recognized and climate vulnerable individuals and communities. And you can see a larger description of that on page four of the plan in front of you if we'd like to. Also mentioned for folks who might be watching this workshop at a legal date, the plan is now available online at www.ramsaycounty.us/climate-action. So you can look it up there. The 2022 version of the strategic priority guided the development of the plan to respond to climate change that we'll dive into in this presentation. And through engagement, planning and partnership building, our climate priority team led the development of an intentional, strategic, accountable and focused approach to aligning and pursuing equitable, measurable and impactful climate actions, mitigation and adaptation across county departments. The updated strategic priority will guide the work that we do over the next two years to build capacity to address near term actions in the plan and identify resources needed to do that work, as well as transparently communicate progress made on these actions. And that will be done largely through that website that I just mentioned. So when we presented to you last August, we described the robust internal and external engagement processing processes that we followed to develop a plan that would celebrate the county's current efforts and identify feasible, progressive, additional strategies to respond to climate change and increase community resilience across the department system. The plan that we developed builds on the state of Minnesota's climate action framework with feedback from over 300 county residents, guidance from internal staff experts and tailored equity focused recommendations from the Institute for Building Technology and Safety, a company that you Commissioner Reinhardt connected us with. The plan itself identifies large scale goals, specific goal aligned actions and the county's role related to each of those goals. And our presentation will provide a pretty high level overview of the climate equity action plans, goals and our next steps in implementing this work. The introductory pages of the plan include a letter of support from Board Chairman Martinson, thank you again for that, and describe why it's critical for the county to take on both climate mitigation and adaptation work. The work that went into developing this plan is also described in great detail and the history of county accomplishments that created a foundation for this plan as well as the overarching goals of this work. I'll point you to page seven in the plan for a timeline of the county's climate action accomplishments to date. We're not going to go into that in detail, but just so you know, it's there. And then page nine for a list of goals and activities that depend on or advance the work outlined in the documents, six focus areas, which we will describe in detail in this presentation. Those overarching goals on page nine aim to ensure that all of the work that we do align with this document promotes internal and external collaboration, transparent communication, thoughtful planning and identification and pursuit of the needed resources. I'll also mention that to reach the goals we've set in this plan, we're convening a climate change governance team within the county to stay coordinated between departments, leading specific actions, to track funding opportunities and to finalize progress metrics related to this work so that we can transparently communicate progress made to community. With the launch of this plan, we, I mentioned the website that communications built, they put a ton of work into that over the last month to get it ready for today. And that's where we'll be providing frequent progress updates on this work. With that, we can dive into the plan. So on page seven, or I'm sorry, on page 10, you'll see the first of six focus areas in the plan. Each focus area follows the same structure, which is a bulleted explanation of the objectives of the focus area and then a series of tables that list goals with near, mid and far term actions outlined below. The abbreviated objective and goals in each section are listed, or in the first section are listed on this slide. And due to time constraints, I'm only going to highlight one action and its racial and health equity impacts per focus area. But I invite you to review the other actions in the section as we go along and we can discuss any questions you have at the end of the presentation. So the clean transportation focus area aims to connect people to places through a safe, equitable and sustainable transportation system. The goals that we'll strive for are to plan a transportation network that supports sustainable multimodal transportation in alignment with the county's equitable development framework and racial equity policy to make it easier and accessible or equitable for all ages and abilities to use the multimodal transportation network and to reduce transportation related greenhouse gas emissions within the county. Within that first goal that I've highlighted on this slide, one of the actions the county will take to lead, take a lead on is to prioritize new or reconstructed multimodal transportation projects that close infrastructure gaps such as sidewalks, trails, bike trails, bus stations, that kind of thing for people walking, biking, rolling and taking transit. And will ensure that these projects are prioritized to improve equitable access to infrastructure, safety and roadway function. Doing this will allow for greater convenience and connectivity in our multimodal transportation network, which has a multitude of racial and equity benefits, including encouraging clean transportation can reduce air and noise pollution, particularly on major thoroughfares, which as we know, due to the history of exclusionary and oppressive urban planning, disproportionately impact under recognized communities in the county. And expanding connectivity that allows for more convenient, low cost access to community and critical resources can support overall good health.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I love this, I love this. I just want to make sure, because I noticed our public works director's not here today, but that as they're building out the, our all abilities, transportation plan, that that we don't have one that supersedes the other, but that they're in collaboration. So I just wanted to say that out loud, thanks.
Thank you for saying.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about like where we partner and or support with like MNDAD and Met Council transportation plans. For example, like I-94 is a big project that is being considered and will our, will the county be weighing in on some of that? Or would it be like the different offices and or departments?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, so for the I-94 project, I know our public works director is attending all of those meetings and that we've been, you know, really informing and learning along the way in terms of making changes there, working alongside MNDAD as well in terms of understanding their intentions, as well as the options that are being presented at this time. Also connecting the dots to the reconnect, a lot of efforts. So they've been very intentional in terms of providing information where necessary, but also learning to, in terms of where they're trying to go with community other side. So I, I think the evolution of a lot of the public works aspects or the transport, transportation aspects is depending on the project, we may be leading, partnering, supporting, and that might ebb and flow depending on the stage of the project and the plans.
Let me follow up on that. As you bring up the state and you said leading, supporting, you didn't mention advocating in contradiction. So you take the state, you take the Met Council, you take the goal line. We wanted many more electric buses on that route. Met Council. I mean, we had to have long negotiations and literally came out with a percentage of what, what we wanted as a county. So eventually, while while the state, the Met Council's part of the state, has these goals, I, today, as we speak, the opportunities are being missed. And not only being missed, they're very adamant about not moving forward in certain areas. So down the road, if it's the county as to what are the, you know, when do we become advocates and adamant about our policies? And how we're going to move forward on them. And now we have the purple line coming, I'm sure we'll have the same discussion. And even though there are economic issues with electric buses, those are the payoffs, those are the decisions you gotta make, right? The value choices. And purple line in the neighborhood it goes through, it's, it's better to have electric buses because of the communities involved are affected by the pollution. And even with the BRTs going now slowly, it's the same story, those should be electric buses because the ASW on snowing in university is the highest in the state. So I, I'm just bringing up that I really don't give a damn what the state says if they don't, if they don't live to their word. Or you know, if they're not helping, if we're not working together and making this happen.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, so you raise an excellent point. We were not well positioned to have a consolidated kind of approach to advocacy. But for now, until now, we've got this plan that allows us to have a stronger position to advocate for certain aspects of the work in a way that we just kind of historically didn't have. So this does set a new tone for the organization, much like the Economic Competitiveness and Inclusion Plan or the Equitable Development Framework to say, these are our goals and our priorities. And so then how do we springboard off of that and implement against it in a way that's strategic versus, you know, just one op with less? So I'm glad that you raised that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, we'll shift into the next focus area in the plan, Climate Smart Natural Land. This focus area starts on page 13, if you're following along in the document. And it'll guide the management of county land to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, support healthy ecosystems and increase environmental resilience. Our broad goal in this focus area, our broad goals in this focus area are to maintain, expand and manage forests and urban treatment following the natural resources management plan, to protect, restore and manage peatlands, wetlands and watersheds and to use land management practices that enhance climate resilience. Within the last goal area, one of the actions we'll take the lead on is to provide education focused on land management practices that residents and businesses can use to enhance climate resilience on their property or in their neighborhood. There are so many community based organizations, resources and tools that are already available to help residents improve the resilience of their homes and neighborhoods at low or no cost to them. But what we heard through community engagement in this, in the process of developing this plan was that folks don't know how to find or where to look for these resources. So sharing information about these resources, particularly with under recognized and climate vulnerable residents can help to improve air quality in their neighborhoods, reduce energy burden for individual homes, improve physical and mental health by increasing access to natural outdoor space and increase autonomy for individuals to make decisions and take actions that meet their own specific needs. With that, we'll shift into the third focus area of the plan. Driving Communities starts on page 16 and mirrors the state of Minnesota's climate action framework chapter focused on resilient communities with the objective to collaboratively build the capacity of Ramsey County communities to survive and thrive in changing conditions. Our broad goals within this focus area are to provide technical assistance, tools and data to support information sharing and learning through community networks, to protect culturally important activities, to pursue resilient infrastructure and critical facilities updates and to reduce waste and promote beneficial use of materials. I highlighted the second goal on this slide and within that focus, or within that goal, one of the actions we'll take the lead on is to host community conversations with residents to ensure that the county is meeting community needs and continuously improve outreach methods based on feedback from the community at those community conversations. We're also in the process of hiring a health educator to lead with targeted, climate focused community engagement, meeting community members where they are to share resources for building equity and learn about the barriers or concerns that they have that hinder equitable, equitable progress in this space. Whether that's focused on waste reduction or critical facility updates, we want to make sure that it's informed by the needs of under recognized and climate vulnerable community members. So this new hire will help to do that. In addition to these targeted conversations, we're convening an equitable climate action resident advisory team to provide input and guidance to increase equitable outcomes of county led actions to address climate change. And I want to thank all of you again for sending invitations out to your constituents after the August workshop to join that effort.
Excuse me, Abby.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to make sure that this work is not going to be the, the engagement and community conversation isn't necessarily going to be siloed just on the climate action. I'm thinking specifically, you know, in the work around Rice Creek Commons. One of the things we talked about is if you look at our needs for housing across the metro area, if we don't do it here, it's going to be done further out, which is going to have negative climate impacts. And being able to talk about that with communities, when we're talking about other economic development opportunities, especially our housing work, I think could create really helpful partnerships and that awareness piece. So how we talk about the climate resiliency across every area is super important, but that's one in particular because every time a community, and I think also in terms of partnership with our cities, since they are generally the ones who are, you know, having the development happen and need to deal with the zoning and they get the pushback from community, being able to partner with them on how, you know, that we've done this analysis, we actually do need more housing. And building it here is better because the alternatives are so much further out and less likely to be able to access things like transit. Making sure that the engagement is robust across different development and that we're tying to that, much in the same way that when we look at our board resolutions, we have a racial equity impact on each of them. I think there's space for climate impact on each of them as well and thinking about how that happens and how we have those conversations. Because they're happening without us right now.
Thank you, Board Chairman Commissioner, for that comment. I'll note that when we convene the climate change governance team, a major goal of that initiative is to ensure that there's collaboration across departments and that department directors are aware of all of the work that's happening in alignment with this plan. So that'll be an opportunity to say, oh, you're doing engagement on this specific project, let's couple that with this initiative and this plan. And we've also talked about developing a climate impact RBA, so more on that in the future.
Yeah, we like that idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Abby for all of your work, you and your team and everyone, this is really exciting. And I have a couple of questions around our partnerships. And first of all, just hoping that you're engaging active living too, because they're super engaged in all of this. And I'm trying to remember if we already had a climate action segment about one of our meetings, but probably if we haven't, I think we should do that with, with our active living teams that are out there working. And then you've all heard me talk about the Ramsey County League of Local Governments and thank you very much, you presented to them as well. So all of our cities care about this and they're all doing work on it and they're hiring their own consultants and they're doing all this stuff. And I said, you know, we would, we really should come together. So it is our, it is our collective action theme to do climate action. So, you know, we've had you come and talk, they, they still are thinking of bringing someone in to help with all their work. And it feels as though like when you're doing all these community meetings, that we should be partnering with our cities because they really want to do this work as well. So I hope we're not, I really want us to make sure we're partnering with, you know, the league needs this, I mean, they, they are underutilized, the potential of that organization to use the cities coming together, school districts, you know, we're getting more and more partners. We really need to use that and they all feel it too, they're like, we, we should be doing more. So I just feel like this is the issue that we can all come together on. And so as you're doing community engage, engagement and all these things, I mean, I think every city would want to have a meeting in their city about this. So I don't know how that fits into what you're thinking about, but I just don't want to be siloed from our cities and district councils and all of our local, local units on all of this. And then, yeah, and so just maybe, maybe you could just expand a little bit on the engagement that you are doing. Like, we all know how engagement can be really effective, like hold a meeting and see who shows up, which doesn't work that well, sometimes it does, but, or let's get into community and do it, which I'm assuming you're doing a lot more of that. So maybe just talk a little bit about the engagement that you are doing. And then how do we, how do we make sure we're using the league the way we can? I think it would really help us in our work.
I'll just talk a little bit, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, about moving forward. So the, the work has, has just begun. And so this, there was a tremendous amount of work that got us to here by a lot of folks in this room. And yet now we have to implement again and against it. And I think the work of the, the governance team is going to be, how do we implement this in partnership with our community? Our cities, as you know, green step cities is a thing for our community partners, they're very proud of that.
Exactly.
Maybe there's an opportunity to, you know, where does the county fit into that structure? Knowing that they're the land use authorities, so they've got other requirements they have to hit. And so, but this framework allows us to say, we've got a platform to which we intend to invest. How do we partner with the cities to ensure alignment and expectations? You know, whether it be through projects like Rice Creek Commons or other opportunities, you know, like our transportation network, how do we align with our cities to make sure that we're all, all boats are being lifted here? So I think in terms of future engagement, that's just begun, but I'll let Abby share about engagement today.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'll share for the rest of the board's benefit that when I presented to the Ramsey County League of Local Governments, I offered to them that we would provide a copy of this plan that they could redevelop into a template for cities to develop their own versions of this plan, similar to the way we did with the state of Minnesota's climate action framework and developing this plan and agreed to continue meeting with them in that process. So there's definitely synergy there, we'll see what direction it goes in.
So if I could just say one more thing, Mr. Chair, so yes, thank you, thank you for doing all that. So of course, they have the seat, the league or the collective action team is very engaged, you know? And they said, yes, let's have regular meetings, let's, and Ramsey County, can you convene those? Can you help us? Because the league doesn't have a, have a. Can you help us? Cause the league doesn't have a, have a, they hire a, you know, a consulting team to run their meetings, but that consulting team isn't hired to do, you know, climate action work. So they're thinking of hiring somebody to do that. And these, or can Ramsey County help convene all of us in this work? And so it, it did bring a big question to me, like that's what Ramsey County does. We like to convene. You know, I don't want to put it all on Abby and clearly we, you know, we can't put it all on Abby. But if we're hiring somebody, they want to hire somebody. I mean, it feels like we should be coming together on this and that we don't all need to be hiring people to be doing this work. So I just want to be really serious about how we can help them and not overburden Abby, but bring in people then to do the convening that I think is, is best done at the county level so that every city isn't off doing their own thing. So they're really focused on this community work. I mean, they know they're better off not just doing it on their own, but someone else. Now they'd have to, you know, we'd have to see, they could pay into that, you know? I guess that's the model we'd have to look at, but just, just know that the league is, is serious about wanting to do something about this. And I'm, I want to support that because I think that is the way to go. So however, however those conversations can go. Thanks.
Thank you, Victor.
Well, and I'd like to be back on that as far as, I, I think, I mean, there's a natural connection with public health, environmental health, parks and rec and how that all comes together with the cities and the roles that they have and what we have as far as what we can do. But they're always looking for better ways to do things. And so I think one of the things that we may want to do with this is arrange beyond the city council agendas to present it. We've done that with housing, we've done that with other things. And I think that it gives them a, a lens into what they can, they can work on with us as we go forward. I think that, especially some of the plans that they're, excuse me, putting together regarding the environmental aspects of, of garbage and recycling and toxicity reduction and how we can really work with them on that.
Thank you, Board Chair and Commissioner. Those are great ideas and we, I think all three of us have noted them, so.
Well, and I think our communications department really has to step up here too, because we put these great plans in place and we do implement, but it's not really, there's not a spotlight put on it. And I think this one, the timing is right to put a spotlight on it.
Right.
Thanks, Commissioner. There's absolutely a robust plan to put a spotlight on this and already begun with some amazing work that the communications team has done with a microsite, which I don't know if we'll talk about later, but we can certainly make sure we send out a note to you all so you can see how that's been developed work. It's been a great partnership with them and we're very excited about what they can do with this new information. It's great.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the next focus area. On page twenty, we'll see the Clean Energy and Efficient Buildings Focus Area, which will help us or help lead us in pursuing 100% carbon-free, reliable and affordable electric power and heat sources through policies, investments and partnerships. The goals included in this focus area are to track and reduce energy use and pursue 100% carbon-free energy sources in county-owned facilities, to increase the ability of the county-owned and county-funded buildings to withstand the impacts of climate change and to provide resources to residents on alternative energy and energy efficiency options, as well as to design and build climate-smart new buildings when appropriate. One of the actions that we'll take the lead on in the third goal on this slide is to develop policies and support community-based organizations to ensure efficient and functional heating and cooling is provided to tenants. Commissioner Jean, this is something you mentioned was of particular interest when we presented in August. And your words were echoed closely by community members in the community engagement opportunity that we held in October. Did you? Did you have? Okay. Tenants need additional support to ensure that they benefit in terms of finances, health and environmental impact from climate-smart upgrades to building energy systems in addition to property owners. Did you want me to pause for a question?
Yes, yes, I, my hands were raised, but I was, so this is such an important area that I was, I mean, too intent to make. Go ahead. So just, I like what we're doing here and what we're going to do in the planning process. But when I look at this page here, all I see is dollar signs. And so I'm just thinking, how will this be funded? Where do the dollars come from? And, and what are those partners and who are those partners?
Thank you, Commissioner and Board Chair. That's a really important question and you're absolutely right that this is a hugely expensive focus area in the plan. We don't have a simple answer for that at the moment. Part of the answer is that the Climate Change Governance Team will be tasked with looking for funding options, whether that's through existing funding, funding mechanisms within the county or the grants that the EPA and other federal entities are offering to support this work right now. Yeah, did, did you want to add anything to that?
I think that's helpful. I think this, this will be a part of how, like she said, the governance teams will connect what we're already doing within our county system and within community. And we also know that there is just, there's a lot of opportunity for investment here. When we have to, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, we have to balance that with the capacity of, of what we have as a county system and priorities.
So are we looking to expand staff in this area? You know, the hiring, can you talk about that process and what do you think that would look like?
I'll look to the deputy county managers.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, you know, in terms of resources, we will need staffing capacity to be able to deploy the, the wide range of recommendations throughout this plan. You know, especially to, you know, seek out outside funding sources to be able to do the work and then to sustain the work moving forward. You know, one thing that Commissioner Martinson just flagged for me, you know, we do do a lot of this already in terms of, for example, HRA, you know, rehab or weatherization programs, you know, that type of thing. I think where we deploy funding against the equitable development framework and now that framework will have a dotted line to the Climate Equity Action Plan. And this is kind of a later presentation point, but as we look ahead to the Economic Competitiveness and Inclusion Plan, the two-point-oh version, those recommendations currently go through 2025. So it, we need to start preparing for what the next iteration is going to be. And we hope that the, the, this plan will find its way into that economic competitiveness and inclusion plan to have, to really cement it, whether it's supporting the industry or it's supporting the housing aspects in terms of, when we invest in affordable housing, here's the kind of standards that we expect, kind of cement that position. But we deploy, you know, for example, housing and redevelopment authority resources, you know, with energy efficiency requirements in mind. It's already slightly embedded within the equitable development framework, but not to this extent. So.
Yeah, I just think about Rice Creek, right? And we're going to be doing some new development and I know our priority is to be as efficient, you know, as, as possible with that. And, and so I'm just thinking dollars because I know we invest like this somewhere, it can take from other places too. And what did that look like in a bigger budget of the, the things that we also want to do, especially like around mental health and stuff like that where, you know, we definitely need, I would say more investment in that area, just the impacts and I don't know who I need to talk to about. But maybe it's, I don't know, so on, you know, what that looks like in the bigger scheme of things. So, thank you.
Well, I think to, to, something else too, but to this point, this is also about thinking about our partnerships and, you know, we have, you know, Community Action does weatherization programs and we have federal funding to do that. So how are we partnering with CAP to make sure what folks are coming in? You know, it's something we recently thought about on the cap board was, if, if our goal is creating sort of opportunities for generational prosperity, what does that look like? And how we do that with Head Start? How do we do that with our jobs programs? But also when you're able to stay in your home and increase your home's value, but you've made it more affordable to live in through that weatherization, it's also more climate-friendly. You know, when we look at Rice Creek Commons, some of the things we look at is there is a larger front-end investment for some of those more energy-efficient infrastructure. But it creates long-term affordability, which would be passed on then to the future homeowners. So how do we partner with different grant programs to help buy down the cost of that more expensive infrastructure that say a private developer doesn't necessarily want to take on? But if we do that there, we've then created long-term affordability in terms of energy usage in addition to the climate impact. So how do we get the most bang for our buck, as it were? And I do think partnership is one of those ways and potentially, you know, if we can work with organizations that are already doing weatherization, whether it's CAP or Center for Environment, all those pieces and partnering and maybe adding capacity to go after bigger pots of funding or whatnot for, for specific programs and pilots. When we invest in something, you know, a piece of equipment that's going to last for 50 years and create lower costs for the homeowner, we're, we're also investing in affordable homeownership and housing. The reason I raise my hand is completely off topic because I did not know where to fit this question exactly, but it was maybe in thriving communities or infrastructure. But the, there was questions about water storage and water management and I'm wondering if there's any sort of thought or plan around sort of a county-wide groundwater management plan. I know it's something that I went through a few times in my time here, both from when our groundwater levels were very high, when I started in office and we were experiencing significant flooding, but I know groundwater impacts some of our lakes and watersheds and that other counties, I think it's Washington County, has a more holistic groundwater management plan across the watershed districts and whether that's something that could come up as part of these goals.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner and Board Chair. There's not currently a plan to develop a comprehensive county-wide watershed management plan, but one of the actions in the Thriving Communities section of this framework or this plan calls on us to collaborate with the watershed management organizations. I think there are 11 of them in Ramsey County and a couple of them we've already collaborated with on their own resilience plans. But I think that's a great idea to get everybody aligned in this action.
I just want to say, there's a lot. I mean, we're drawing, I don't want to, you know, it seems overwhelming, but we need to list it all, right? We need to put it, it doesn't mean we could get to all of it right away. It doesn't mean one is moving forward. But we need to list it all because this touches, I mean, you could double this list. I'm sure if I let you think about it. But so I just want to make sure we, we list all of this and, and, so let you process it and see how we, we put a plan and we can move forward on.
Thank you. And while we're listing things, I love this idea, listing things. Not that we'll get to them all, I get it. But because I made the suggestion that we're going to partner with our cities, many of our cities are starting to get, you know, environmental justice coordinators and I don't know how many are. I know Roseville just hired someone and I know they're all starting to. And so I just think it would be a great thing to recommend a city to hire somebody. It's not like we're going to do their work, but we can convene them to help them do the work. And then, you know, if we advise them, hire someone like Roseville did, and I don't know how many of our other cities do, but it's just a suggestion that, that you connect with whoever does have environmental justice or climate action. I mean, I think it fits under that category for these cities. I, I don't know what other cities do. So it'll be interesting to know.
I have one more question. So in regards, I know there's a lot of energy efficient options out there that folks are doing to just make their private homes more efficient. And I see here, this is, you're going to lead on this, the county, this is the county role. Are you not doing that already? Anyone else?
Are we not providing those resources?
Energy efficient, yes, for residents.
I think from some.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we did have a weatherization program, single-family rehab, and that's getting relaunched. It, the, it wasn't, the, the resources weren't being deployed after we did a big data dive to populations that would benefit from it more significantly.
It was two populations, wasn't it?
Well, we looked, I think, at the program when we did a big data dive, I think it was like 90% of the homeowners were senior white homeowners that maybe fell under the income qualifications because of fixed income. But it wasn't reaching all geographies in a way that our programs really set out to do. And so that, that has taken us, you know, an opportunity to take a pause and say, how do we deploy these dollars and market the program in a way that better serves, you know, community? And, and so that has kind of, that work has been relaunched. But there are rehab and weatherization programs. We do have a contract with CEE to do much of this work, slipstream and all of that is being kind of housed currently within the economic development with, with the resources available to us through that HRA, but just not probably to the scale that we, we, we'd like, would like to. Yeah.
Thank you. And to Commissioner McGuire's question, I'll note that Roseville's Sustainability Coordinator, Coordinator Noel Backen is an amazing person who actually was one of the students who contributed to the community engagement efforts around this plan. So we're well-connected with her. I meet with Russ Stark, actually quite a few of us meet with Russ Stark at City of St. Paul regularly. But there aren't very many other cities in the county that currently have or have funding to hire sustainability coordinators. So we've connected with some of their natural resource management folks or other individuals within the city or within the municipality, but they're, they're stressed then too.
Yes. Keep recommending to the cities to get people like that since they're all so concerned. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Right. So we'll step into the next focus area on page 23 of the plan. We focus on healthy lives. This focus area will guide our work to partner with community to reduce the direct and indirect health impacts of climate change together. The goals included in this focus area are to co-develop plans and utilize data to influence policies and systems that support healthy communities and workplaces, to share information and resources that do the same, to implement more programs that support healthy communities and workplaces, and to advance food security efforts in alignment with the new strategic food security plan. Within that last goal that I've highlighted on the slide, one of the actions the county will take the lead on is to work with local organizations and governments to promote actions that reduce food insecurity and increase access to culturally and medically appropriate foods that meet dietary needs in the face of climate change. The health impacts of climate change compound with other socioeconomic stressors like food insecurity, resulting in greater disparities in health outcomes for under-recognized and vulnerable communities. An example of this might be a family experiencing food insecurity may be more impacted by an extreme heat wave due to the pre-existing physical, mental and financial stress of food insecurity. And they also may be less able to access resources that would reduce those impacts due to the cost of running air conditioning or the time and reliable transportation needed to access a cooling center. But by working with local organizations, community-based organizations and partners to address food insecurity, the county will help minimize a stressor that can compound with climate change in a really dangerous way. The last, but definitely not least, focus area in the plan, Clean Economy, starts on page 26. It aims to build an economy that addresses climate change and creates equitable opportunities for people. The goals included in this focus area are to help residents and business owner applicants in Ramsey County leverage applicable funding to support the development and growth of businesses needing the just transition to a clean economy in alignment with economic competitiveness and inclusion plan and to support just workforce transitions into the green economy. I've highlighted that last goal on this slide. And one of the actions that we'll take in alignment with that goal to reduce inequity is to provide training and technical assistance to current and emerging green businesses, encouraging them to be inclusive employers that support and retain employees who are under-recognized and climate-vulnerable residents. The opportunities to pursue life-sustaining careers that contribute to climate responses are numerous and growing. And training businesses to hire and retain under-recognized and climate-vulnerable employees will help simultaneously reduce those individuals' personal vulnerability through a stable career with those life-sustaining wages, as well as contribute to the development of innovative climate change solutions that are informed by the lived experience of under-recognized and climate-vulnerable residents. that are informed by the lived experience of under recognized and climate vulnerable residents. With the plan fully described, we'll talk to you a little bit about the next steps in implementing this work. So it's important to note, and I think we have, that this plan calls on the county to contribute, excuse me, to continue the great work that the departments are already doing to respond to climate change and to identify additional resources to take on additional climate action. To support existing and future work, we're convening the climate change governance team to facilitate cross departmental planning, set priorities within our climate climate equity action plan for annual work plans within those teams, identify funding to support those plans, and finalize progress metrics that we can use to communicate progress made on these goals to community. We're also onboarding additional staff to increase implementation capacity and digging into funding opportunities that may help us implement specific climate equity action plan actions. Um, thanks to Ford Chairman Martinson, who sent us an opportunity recently to partner with community on the EPA Thriving Communities grant that we're still in conversation about, but it looks like a a fun opportunity. Um, and then we're also convening that equitable climate action resident advisory team to review county progress and plans and provide feedback on how to improve equitable outcomes and hiring a health educator who will focus specifically on climate change outreach and engagement with under recognized and climate vulnerable communities, to ensure that we're sharing all of the resources that already exist and we're continuing to learn about what people are concerned with and what they're struggling with and help make sure that that informs the work that we do moving forward. All of these efforts will support the work already in motion described on the next couple of slides and help define and resource additional projects. So there's a lot here. I hate putting together a slide that has so many words, and I'm not going to read all of this to you. But we wanted to include it all to celebrate the work that departments are already engaged in that aligns with this plan. Um, I will highlight a few projects on this slide and the next one though. So the government relations team is actively watching for legislative opportunities to support climate mitigation and adaptation initiatives that will advance the work that county departments are doing. Communications has developed the website that we have already mentioned a couple of times to share the climate equity action plan and provide transparent updates on what's progress. Public Health is seeking support from NOAA for a citizen science urban heat island campaign and from EPA for a Green Forum member to support air quality monitoring efforts. Food Security is training their new planner, Cam, who was introduced earlier, in the Climate Equity Action Plan in order to advance food security with a holistic resilience approach. And Emergency Management is working with the St. Paul Fire Department to install a wet bulb sensor as a pilot for a larger climate monitoring system. And it doesn't stop there. Workforce Solutions is partnering with Environmental Health to host a green career fair on May first at the Wilder Center. There'll be more information about that available soon. Community Economic Development is developing a sustainable design framework. Perks and Rec is pursuing resources to reduce energy consumption at county ice arenas. Property Management is installing a building automation system to reduce energy consumption at the courthouse. And Public Works is reviewing their fleet to prepare for hybrid conversion. So as you can see, there's a lot of meaningful work underway already across the county system, and I didn't even describe half of what was included on the last two slides. We're really excited to have the Climate Equity Action Plan, the Climate Change Governance Team, and the Equitable Climate Action Resident Advisory Team to align department action with community needs, to guide cross departmental collaboration and do everything within our capacity to respond to climate change and increase community resilience. And if that, I have to ask the Deputy County Manager, Houdini, to add up the presentation.
Sure. Um, you know, we're gonna need uh your help, because I know you haven't done this, but to start speaking up about what you'd like.
Oh, alright.
Here. But the reality, right? The reality is, this is amazing work. You all have uh really great ideas, and I think we've heard some of those this morning. I think part of this, you know, presenting this to you is to be able to help uh create and continue a pathway for consensus as well as new ideas of what we should be doing. You know, you saw those last two sl- slides, it's everywhere from engagement and education to how we really shift and and invest in everything that we do here in in Ramsey County. This touches every area of our county system. There's not one department that that uh doesn't and, um, that doesn't have something to offer and to put up on the screen about the work that we've been doing here. And uh, this is, this is, this is big. Like you said, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of ideas. Um, it does mean that we have to work well to prioritize. It means that we have to work well to think about how we invest and shift costs um without taking costs away. As you said, Commissioner Moran, from um other important areas of our system, it's about being um innovative. Like you said, Commissioner Fretton, about how you can buy down the cost by partnering with communities um and other organizations. And so that's what, that's what we're, we're looking for and we're, we're working to do. We're looking for you to continue the work that you do around advocating and around being um amazing partners with other government entities to figure out how we can continue to compete and how we can um, you know, uh land out front in the ideas in the space that we're trying to get to as a, as a progressive uh climate equitable um actionable uh county system. So we're excited. This was a, this is the first step to bringing something that has been put together in a strategic way that has brought in so many voices, but we need more voices um forward. And so um it's been fun to be a part of this and to present this to you. I think we have a couple more uh finishing slides, but.
Thank you. I, this is so exciting. Uh, to me, this is probably the most aggressive, going up to solve problems that we take care of on the back end so frequently, health, asthma, food insecurity, housing, right, and and sustainability. I mean, this is really us moving upstream to the front of the root of the problem. So, so exciting that we're doing this. Um, I hope that we get some media and press attention around it because there's not a lot of local governments doing it. So I'm looking at Rose, is it like, because you've done all this work and everyone should know it, and we should sing it at the top of the mountain. Um, do we need to take board action or can we have the opportunity to take board action so we can publicly adopt this plan? I really would think we should bring it to the board, even uh even if it's symbolic. Because I think when we did the um economic inclusion plan, we actually did an R B A where this board voted to adopt the plan. So might be an opportunity there, and that might then get some other media attention as well. Um, this board, you know, we've put it as part of a strategic priority. Now we've built the plan to follow, to work, and it's, it really truly is exciting and incorporates every part of the county. Maybe uh the only plan that is completely countywide, so everybody has a stake and a role to play in it. So really exciting. I, I just want you to feel the support. I know it was a lot of work and there was a lot of like, when is this happening, when is this happening for the last two years? So here it is. We should celebrate. I really want us to take that opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you um, Madam Chair, to just um call that out. It's so, it's so important work. This is really, really exciting. We've all been asking for it. We, we keep bringing Abby out into the community, talk about it, talk about it. She's like, it's getting done, it's getting done. When we, when we um make these recommendations, what we want to do, basically, I hope you know that the board really wants to help. I want to help you find partners. I want to help you find funding. I want to help you find people that are doing this to complement the work we're doing so we don't have to recreate the wheel. I was gonna ask Victoria if, you know, she knows most about what's going on at AMC and Naco. But I know everybody in the country wants to do this kind of work. I think we're, as usual, probably leading in it. Um, so, but there's other ways that we can learn, and I know that there's federal and state funding for some of this. So I, I, I know you've called it out. I, I just want to say that when we make these suggestions, it's really that we want to help you get, get help to do all of this. We know you can't do it all on your own, and you've done amazing work as, as, as you've shown. But um just count, I mean, call on us. Uh, we want to be unified in our efforts to, to get this work done and uh and to help you find, find that funding and partners. So I don't know, do you know what's going on at Naco and AMC, but yeah.
Is the, the funds that are available to federal programs. I'm trying to make sure that we are aligned with that and that are, that all of the Naco members are aware of what's out there. You know, it's, it's kind of weird because you're in a spot where there was a lot of investment made, but if you don't know that what, where to go and ask for it, you miss it. And the timelines are pretty tight on this one. So Naco is trying to do a, a good job of getting that information out to folks. AMC is, they've done a lot more work with Naco, probably because you're president. But, I mean, they've always looked to, to Minnesota for the environmental goals.
Yeah.
Um, but it seems to be even more so where, um, you know, reaching out. Brian Martinson is the person that does the Environment Committee, and he um reached out and actually Naco reached out again to say, hey, what are, what are you doing here? How do we do this? So, um, so there's a lot that is happening. Much of it right now is around funding.
Yeah.
Because we've got it, we've got all this good work that we want to do. And if there's funding available through the federal or the state, but mostly it's federal, um, to make sure that we take advantage of it.
And Commissioner Moran, I wanted to, I know, thank you for raising ideas. How do we pay for this? How do we pay for this? Where does the funding come from? But I think what's really important about this plan and us working is that we are actually going to see cost savings on the backend. And so it seems like a, a strong upfront investment, and we're not going to do it all at once, it'll be phased. But we spent so much money taking care of the issues that impact community on the backend to include mental health, right? Right? And so that we're, we're, so this is a, it isn't all or nothing. It's a, we can do all things uh in the right way when we have plans that are connected. So just wanted to.
Well, and I think a lot of times people disconnect when they think about climate change and weather and things like that. Um, mental health is impacted.
Yeah.
Um, the, your, your physical, um, well, when we were talking about mercury this morning, I mean, all the, all the different things that are impacted here, and we've looked at it. Sometimes, not re, this one really isn't in a silo, but more so than it probably needs to be because uh people need to understand what the impact is on their own lives, on their own families. And um, the impact of, of the environment, obviously, on our health is tremendous.
Let me just say that uh.
Yeah, you're getting ready to close it out? Okay, let me speak before you then. No, I just want to say, you know, this is a, a really thorough, thoughtful, thought out process. And um I just wanted to say I appreciate the work and the partnerships and all that it takes to get this formalized in a place that we can see it. Because once it's down on track, you can work from it. So I just want to say, thank everyone who was really involved in this process.
Yeah.
Victoria, my turn.
Okay. I also wanted to call out, and I know that um this is something that we've talked a lot about at the county, but something that I have been really adamant about is the equity side of this. And so when you put equity into the title of this, I'm just very proud of our county um for really raising it up. And we talk about being intentional, but this really shows that we're intentional.
My turn.
Um, I would say I'm, I very much appreciate the chapters or the parts around the goals around the thriving communities and the clean energy efficient buildings piece. Um, around um goal four, which is on page twenty two, uh around clean energy efficient buildings. I really appreciate that we're taking such uh uh lead roles um in this. We're, um, it's the either construction of our buildings and or the ones that we are funding, um, especially um the piece about um incorporating in climate resilience into design and construction of the projects, as well as um, you know, uh trying to uh promote it uh within our, like, our future um uh H R A funded projects. Um, the other one is also about like uh adaptive reuse of existing buildings and also um being uh being able to reuse and recycle construction materials, which are really big ones too. Because um, like, some of the materials that uh we are seeing that are being used right now are very toxic and does not have a, a, a life cycle to the end of like, how, how we throw it away. Yeah. Um, and then I think the, for the thriving communities, um, uh, one piece I would add is just that, you know, there's just a lot of work that's already happened at the state too, and about how we are tracking that, um, especially around um some of the cumulative impacts law about, uh, right now, they're just going through their, you know, um, a rulemaking process at the EPA. Um, they've already uh defined the environmental justice areas as well. And that's a piece about air quality um that we should be paying attention to. Um, but I would also like to hear more about like, you know, are there old areas where we would be weighing in later too?
I feel like Mary Jo now.
Hey, it's a good thing. Isn't that great?
I think the other thing is.
Yes.
We should get this in our legislative sense. I know they've got a lot of things going on right now, obviously, with the legislative action. But um I was at an event this weekend where Commissioner Moran was talking, there were legislators, mostly legislators, and a few county commissioners that were there, and talking about all the things that the legislature puts in place. And I loved, and I, and I'm probably going to misquote you here, but um it was so impactful to me that, that because you'd been a legislator and a county commissioner, you're saying the things that you pass at the legislature are what you want to see happen. The counties make those dreams come true. And so when we've talked about all of the environmental stuff that's happening up at the Capitol, to at least have this in their hands, the Ramsey County delegation, to at least have it in their hands, I think will show them that we're serious about this, and that's why the funding is so important.
I just, the comment I was gonna make is that Kathy just said, to echo what you stated, this is probably the biggest uh of anything this county has done aboard that, because it touches so many places. But just like we moved on the equity issue fifteen, twenty years ago, it took that long to get here. That's number one. We did it by looking at, making sure our house was in order. So all of this is, is, is fine, but you know, we can be good advocates if our house is not in order. So what I like about this plan is that it is looking at where within our house do we need to get things moving in the right direction? Uh, because that's the impact. Everybody has a plan. The federal government has a plan, the state has a plan. You know, and as we know, we take two steps forward or and one step backwards. So I mean, the, it's, it's better to make sure that our house is in order, that our ship is stable and that we could then push on all of these issues outside of us. That's what I mean by being an advocate. Then we could look externally and say, here's how we do business. And if you do business with us, these are the rules. Any other comments? Well, thank you for a great job.